Dogs out there.
Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 5th meeting of the East Hemfield Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. The meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded and Robert's rules of order will apply. To offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman or people utilizing Zoom. Please use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone, and after speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemfield Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment when non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on a non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. With that, we will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Pledge?
Pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up tonight, we have a hearing on rezoning 949 Church Street Corner Parcel at Church in Stony Battery. It's approximately 6.7 acres from the recreation to open space to community business center. With that, Mrs. Schweitzer, this has been duly advertised for our meeting tonight.
Properly advertised on May 22nd and May 29th.
Okay.
And it was submitted by the East Hemfield Recreation Authority.
And it's, and it's, and we have someone here from the Recreation Authority here tonight, Dave Lounsbury. Dave, you want to say a few things? Don't want to put you on the spot, but just maybe give us a little overview of what we're trying to do here.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is David Lounsbury. I own a company in East Hemfield TLC Environmental, 2733 Columbia Avenue, 17603. I'm a member of the Rec Authority, and we've been involved with the township for the past couple of years in trying to develop a procedure and a plan to optimize the use of the corner property that Mr. Bennett has mentioned, with the goal being to try to maximize revenue so as to reduce any potential impact on township residents for operating and maintaining of the golf course. We've had several meetings. We appreciate the town puts input, a township's input. We appreciate the zoning hearing board looking at it as well, and we hope that the motion passes. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Again, this is part of the Recreation Authority's desire to improve the marketability of the property there on that corner. The change in the zoning will still allow recreation space. Nothing really will, will, will change as I, as I understand it. Okay. All right. With that, any questions from the board on this rezoning?
Just a discussion, the whole reason we created the Recreation Authority, who have done a very good job was to turn the finances around for the golf course. For years, the golf course was subsidized to a tune of about $400,000 a year from taxpaying funds, which was pulled away from recreation and roads and other things that we needed to be spending the money on. Since the Recreation Authority has taken over, we've gotten it down to zero, which is nice. But you guys also need money for capital improvements and other things you gotta do on the golf course. And so any flexibility that we can give to make the golf course run more like a business is going to take more future burdens off the township taxpayers. So I applaud you for the job you guys have done because it's allowed us to put money elsewhere in the township boards needs to be instead towards the golf course.
We've investigated the possibility of federal and state grants. We're in the process. We've interviewed two consultants who we may retain one of them to assist us in this endeavor. This project is going, however the site is developed, it's not going to happen within the next six months or one year. Obviously, there's going to be some time involved with some additional studies, then having the property marketed, look for grants. So it's nothing imminent that's going to happen within the next couple of years, but we will continue to work toward the goal of maximizing the revenue so as the golf course can continue to be totally self-supporting.
Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of the audience too, the diagram that's up here on the screen is, this is the intersection of Church Street and Stony Battery Road. The parking lot for the golf course is, is in this area. This building is the current placement of the maintenance shed, that's our maintenance facility that's there. The golf course will be in this direction over here. So corner of Church and Stony Battery. This is the main entrance right here of the golf course currently.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
What type of businesses or what, what has there been, I'm sure there has been discussion on what might fit in that space? What might be a good use of that space? You care to share any of the, any of the ideas?
Well, we've had a wide range of ideas proposed, and basically that we're viewing that corner property as a blank slate. Whatever best suits the, the needs of the township and the authority and the residents would be what would be, you know, ultimately implemented. I would also like to point out that the township will retain ownership of the land. They will not sell the property off and that the lease, there would be a lease involved with whatever the tenant or tenants are going to be. But there's nothing in writing right now or nothing on paper as yet to say that this is the direction we're headed as far as what type of establishment or establishments will, will go in there. I would also like to point out that one of the first things that needs to be done to make this property more marketable would be to relocate the existing maintenance building, which is smack dab in the middle of the property. And if that were to remain, it would, it would impact adversely the marketability of the property and the uses that could be, that could be used for.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a little slow here. Yeah, I'm, as, as we both know, you're on the Hemfield Rec Committee too. Is, is there discussions on like using that for an expansion of Hemfield Rec at all or?
The Rec, the Rec is aware of what's, what's going on, the plans, the general idea of what's going to happen with the corner property. But there really haven't been any really significant major discussions about part of that property being used by the Rec or conversely, some of the Rex's property across the street being used for, you know, other, other uses. So that, that's pretty much something that will be looked at as these studies continue to see, but there's nothing definite right now on the table.
Okay. And I should probably know this, being on that committee myself, but does this make it easier or more difficult for Hemfield Rec to share that?
You mean the property that the Rec sits on now?
No, if we, you know, with these changes and opening up the use of that, does it make it easier for Hemfield Rec to take advantage of that location or?
Yeah, I mean, obviously it, part of that property could stay for, you know, open space and recreation. The issue would be access to that portion, that part of the tract from the existing township, from the existing Rec Center's property. Basically, you would have to have some type of traffic control or a pedestrian bridge to go from one side of True Street to the other. So.
In terms of zoning usage, it could stay as it is now, currently zoned, open spaced recreation for the recreation center to use it.
There could be a combination uses that would come out, depending on what happens.
I think I agree with you. Church Street is a big barrier and the driveway for the golf course is what PennDOT would call a mid-block crossing, which is not something that they encourage people, pedestrians to use. The swim team still does park people sometimes across the street when there's some issues. And there usually has to be somebody there watching the crossing. And in the past, when we've done larger events with the swim team, we would actually have to have fire police out there to get people from one side to the other or traffic. So the, having a state road divide the lots is a pretty big, big barrier for that one. It does present challenges to the Rec. I know Jeff Book has looked at options in the past and utilizing some of, trying to bring a little more synergy between the golf course and the Rec, but the church streets are your issue. If that was a local road, it'd be different.
I think the major advantage to the Rec Center by, by optimizing the use of the corner property would be more visibility. People would come to that corner that might not normally come. They'd see there's a recreational facility across the street, and we would hope they'd walk across the street or pull into our parking lot and go in and get better acquainted what, what the programs are at the Rec and the facilities. So I definitely think it would, it would benefit the Rec from the standpoint of potential additional members.
Yeah, the, the commercial business designation really provides the flexibility for it to go either way. You know, if we, if we would have gone for a, let's just say, a commercial rezoning there that would have allowed just business types, that would have precluded the Rec from moving on there or being, being part of the development of that, of that corner. The commercial business designation allows them to be part of it in, in the future. And on some level, I, I would also add that, as you know, I was previously on the Rec Board and Dave and I have had some discussions about and encouraged the Rec to think about how they could be involved in the, in the development of that, of that corner property. So it's not off the table. As Dave said, there's, there's no, no real plan right now, but this does give us a maximum amount of flexibility to develop the site. Maybe it'll be in, and for some financial gain for the township and for the golf course. Perhaps it won't be. Who knows? Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Do we have any comment from the audience tonight? Okay.
On Chester's 1505 Nissie Road. If I recall correctly, there was discussion about a potential gas station going into that location and some of the preliminary looking at this.
There's, there's actually been multiple different concept plans put together of uses. I don't think there's enough traffic volume actually for like a sheets to go there at this point, to be honest with you. I think the Turk, I watched the Turkey Hill, how they struggled. The sheets on State Road gives you an example of the traffic volume. You need to really put a, a good convenience store in there. That, that would definitely be like a B location, not an A location.
Anyone else next? Anyone on Zoom that would like to make a, a comment?
I'm not seeing any.
All right. Not seeing any comment. Anything additional from the board? With that, close our hearing at 7:15. Also make a note that we started the hearing at 7:03. All right. So we have an option here, as I understand it, with, with this, we can take action right away or we can wait until we do the consent agenda. What would board like to do?
It's listed under your action items if you just wanted to kind of be.
All right. Let's just, let's just move on to our consent agenda for this evening and then, then we'll go with that. Our consent agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion or deliberation. Consent agenda items are provided to all member, board members in advance for review. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the board audience this evening?
Only that I'll be abstaining from item number C.
Okay.
So we can either vote the whole block and abstain, or we can break it up. It doesn't matter to me.
Let's, let's just approve the consent agenda and you can abstain.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Any comment from the audience on the consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Brubaker. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Johnson. Motion from Mr. Brubaker, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda this evening, please say aye.
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 Abstain.
Motion passes three, zero with one abstention. Okay. Moving on to the action item this evening. We have the rezoning of 949 Church Street Corner Property, ordinance number 220, 2024.02. Any additional questions this evening from the board or the audience? Okay. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 2024-02, a motion to adopt rezoning of approximately 6.7 acres on the Four Seasons Golf Course property from Recreation Open Space to Community Business Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Russell, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero. Do we have any other business that we would like to discuss this evening? Hearing none. Do we have any new business? I guess we do. We have two items of new business this evening. We're going to have a discussion this evening concerning a resolution that we're, we are considering concerning the non-sanctuary status of some, some communities in the, in the area. For me, this is not about immigration. This is about legal immigration versus illegal immigration. And I think it's, we want to find ways to support legal immigration in the, in our communities. I believe everyone is pretty familiar with, you know, what's been going on out there. What I'd like to do is develop some consensus here this evening on, from the board about the development of a resolution that we could enact at our next meeting. So with that, is there any comment on that intention from the board?
I think just from my, my perspective, we all take an oath to uphold federal, state and local laws and the constitution and state constitution. And there's a lot of federal laws I don't like. I could throw EPA's rules and regulations in as a, something that's very heavy-handed and burdensome. In fact, most federal laws I don't like a lot of. But there's a process that if there's a federal law you don't like, there's a process to try and get it changed. It's a very onerous process. It's a very political process. There's a lot of political action committees that are hindrance to making change, but there is a process to make change and go through your congressman and your senator and ask for bills and changes to laws and to make it better for the community as you see it. That's the proper way to do it. I don't understand just ignoring laws that we don't like. So that's, that's my basic position. We're at local level, we have very limited legal ability ourselves to do things. We're for the most part enforced to just follow the laws of the state and the federal level and to basically do things that we're told to do live, which are imposed upon us. Just gave an example of EPA, which is probably even, probably the most heavy-handed at the local level with what we have to deal with. I don't like a lot of laws, but we have to follow. And I don't think we're in a position to pick and choose which federal laws we can follow and not follow. That's, that's violating our oath and that's quite frankly breaking the law. And that's not something I support.
Anyone else?
Yes. Is the intention to have a, to put together a statement, a resolution tonight? Is there something that's been written or?
There's nothing that's been written for this evening. I believe we all have copies of resolutions from the borough of Effordah, Columbia and Pequay Valley. There are elements of all three of their resolutions that in some way, shape or form, I would like to incorporate in a resolution from East Hemfield Township. A resolution that I would like to see put forth would be one that supports our residents, our community, law enforcement and our state and county elected officials. So that's real, I really want that to be the, the focus of any resolution that, that gets developed.
Okay. Well, based on what Mr. Russell said, that piece of it, I agree with, and that's been part of every resolution. But that, when I've read, when I've read the other resolutions, that's kind of often the only part that I agree with. You know, the part that we must follow the law. And what created the controversy was the Lancaster City becoming a welcoming city and of a, and there's a lot of myths about that, that, that represents that they are not following the law, but it says, claim. Lancaster is a sanctuary city. Reality Lancaster City does not prevent federal officials from enforcing federal laws. Claim the law, Lancaster terminated cooperation with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Reality Lancaster City cooperates with state and federal law enforcement as required by law. So, you know, I, so it just depends on the wording of our resolution. But like the things that I've read, you know, Mr. Bennett, you had mentioned you would suggest pulling pieces of each of it, but I just saw a lot of, a lot of political statements in all of those. So, you know, I just, I wrote a summary here, so I'd like to go through it. I'm against making a resolution on the subject of East Hemfield and immigration. One, it's divisive in the communities. And I understand sometimes we have to make difficult decisions, but I don't think this topic demands that. Lancaster City is not a sanctuary city. They're a welcoming city, and there's myths about that that I just mentioned. The Lancaster City Council made a decision they felt was best for its residents. And I can only think of political reasons for our board to react, if, if indeed that's what we are reacting to. Some of the resolutions have included statements about Lancaster City and disagreement, but you know, they, the same thing we, we try to do is represent our community. That's what they did and they were pleased with their result. In a way, this feels like an unfunded mandate if it results in the police having to do more things than they've done in the past. You know, there's a cost to that. And I'm confident the police are currently following the law. This resolution could make it appear to members, that members of the boards, members of the board believe that they are not currently following the law. And I know you would not say that, but I'm, I'm not sure what the community would think about stating, police follow the law. I believe they do that. And it's not free. There's legal costs to write and review a resolution. So those are just the thoughts that overwhelmed me in the past few weeks when I've been thinking about doing this.
Okay. It, it's my thought that any resolution would steer clear of anything that Lancaster City has done. That's, you're, you're right. They make decisions in their area for their, their community, their residents, and that, that's up to them. But as I review, as I look at some of the things that are going on with our immigration process in this country right now, I, I guess I would ask, when would you have me express concern about the unlawful immigration actions by the federal government? Should we wait until another college student is killed? Should we wait until two East Hemfield police officers are shot somewhere? At some point, I think we need to speak out on some of these issues, and I think we're, we're remiss as elected officials who, who are elected to really lead the community by not addressing some of, some of this. So, you know, that's again, you know, some of my thought, and I think the time to speak up is now. And, and I think this is one of the ways that we can, that we can do this. Before the problems come to our backyard, because on the track that we're on, I believe that eventually they, they will be here and they will come.
Okay.
Okay.
May I?
Sure.
May I respond?
This is a discussion.
A lot of rules in Robert's Rules of Order. Yeah, well, I, I think Mr. Russell touched on this too. There, there's a form for addressing your beliefs of what laws need to change at the state and while the federal level in this case. I understand your concern, but I prefer not to use East Hemfield as the, the sounding board for your, that sounds harsh, your personal feelings. I don't mean it that way, but you know, I, I think we don't need to make a resolution as to represent what your feelings are on, on this matter. So, that's.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I would say, I'm not looking for new laws. I would just like the laws we have in the books enforced. And I believe, I believe that there's the federal government, the executive branch, the federal government, the executive branch, and Congress have done a bad job with immigration policy. I say that, but most importantly, what I want to happen is I want the residents in our community to, to be safe. And again, I think some of the problems that sanctuary cities are having will eventually work their way our way. And that's my concern. And I think we, we want everybody to know that we fully support our law enforcement community here. And go, you know, go from there. And I recognize you may think that this is just me. Maybe it is. And I'm one person on this board. So after having some discussion here tonight with, with you all and discussion with, I'm sure there's some people here in the audience that would like to speak. Maybe we won't go, maybe it won't go anywhere. Okay, but I just think that now's the time to speak up before we have the problem in our backyard. When it comes to illegal, illegal immigration. I don't think there's anybody on this board who is opposed to legal immigration. I think that needs to be stated. Number of emails that I got today seem to seem to feel that I'm against immigration. My grandfather was an immigrant here. I'm not against immigration. Okay, but what's going on here doesn't make any sense on a, on a national level. And maybe that's out of my ballpark, but I feel pretty good saying it. Because I think I'm right.
So I'd like to just reiterate my feelings. I'm in agreement with, with Mr. Russell, his initial comments, I think 100%. We don't always agree with all the laws, but they need to be enforced until they're, until they go through the process to, to make new laws or change the laws. Personally, I'm somewhat conflicted on this issue. And, I mean, one of my questions tonight would be to Chief Brubaker. Would, is this, would?
I would respectfully ask that you'd not address the chief on, on this particular issue right now.
Okay.
This is not, all the chief is responsible for is enforcing the laws that are on the books. And both local, state and federal.
Exactly.
She will do that.
Exactly. We all took the oath to uphold the law. So we already have, we already have that. I'm just conflicted to some degree how this is going to change that. We, we, we are already, we're already, yeah, we've already sworn to uphold the laws of the, of the the federal government, the state, the county, the township. We, as, as township leaders, we're, we swore an oath to do that. So whatever laws are on there, we're already, we already should be enforcing them. And I'm assuming that the chief and the police department are, you know, they're, they're obviously taking the same, you know, an oath to do that as well. On the other hand, I understand and agree with your, your perspective on how things are at the border right now. And what are we going to do to keep these, these types of things that are occurring in other states? What are we going to do to keep them from occurring here? I, I, I see that, I see that side of the, of the issue as well. Is there a responsibility that we have to do something proactively that, that may by some chance, you know, preclude something like that from happening? To me, it's, you know, it's, it's easily worth the, the discussion and, and the the frustration or whatever to, to get something like this in place if, if it would make the difference in one person being shot or killed, or whatever the case may be. So, yeah, right now, as I sit here, you know, I'm still trying to collect my thoughts and, and the information and, and process all that. And trying to decide whether there's really a need for it and whether it would be effective is, is where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Anything else from the board at this point? All right, with that, let's go to the people in the room. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this issue tonight? Okay, go ahead.
John Chester's 1505 Nistley Road. It concerns me that we want to get into legal issues that I don't think is really the jurisdiction of township supervisors. That's why we have the state and we have the federal government. Immigration comes under their bailiwick. Are they doing the right job? Probably not. With you to pass a resolution, that won't change anything. If individuals on this board wish to express their concerns and dissatisfaction, you have legislators that you can reach out to. But I have a feeling that we're coming up with political issues that people are going to divide this community. I take exception to Mr. Bennett stating about having people shot by immigrants. I listened to the evening news tonight. The other day in Columbia, illegal gun, three-year-old shot. I listened to the news tonight, somewhere up in Harrisburg area, somebody else shot at an apartment complex. Were those illegal aliens? So please don't lump illegal aliens in it. They are people also. Their circumstances coming to this country unfortunately put them in a very bad position. My heart goes out to them because of the countries that they are leaving. We need to do something on the federal level to make a difference so that these people can have a better life where they are so that they don't have to run away, escape from gangs and so on. So for you to use the fear mongering here, that somebody's going to be shot in East Hemphill beside some illegal immigrant here, I take that very, with much concern that you used that because you're throwing some red meat out there. I see our school districts picking up and with social issues that are dividing them. We just have a superintendent resign. Why? Because people are making politics and divisive situations. And then we're coming up with winners and losers. I don't want winners and losers. I want people that can work together. When I come to these meetings, which I've been coming to for years, people say to me, well, how do those meetings go? And I says, one of the things that I, I have admired the supervisors in the past, they're always willing to listen, even with people that have different points of view. They treat them with respect. And I would hope you would do the same thing. These people are still human beings. Federal government, the state government need to do something. You need to talk as individuals, but not to do something collectively as a board. Thank you.
Either one.
Okay. Hi, I'm Liz Bender, 2591 Spring Valley Road. I was originally planning to come speak about something else, but since the non-sanctuary resolution discussion is on the agenda, I've changed my mind. I'll be brief. You know, no matter our political ideologies or affiliations, I believe that we can all agree that officials should use their time wisely and resources wisely. And I don't think discussing this resolution is an effective use of your time. I'd like to ask what problem this resolution will solve for East Hemphill. Not nationally, not what's going on at the border for East Hemphill. And as a very informed citizen and a daughter of an immigrant, I see no issue here in East Hemphill that this resolution won't solve. You know, I agree with Mr. Russell and Mr. Brubaker, who already spoke about the fact that you're following the laws. So what is the, the point of doing a resolution to say, we're going to follow the laws? You know, I think if the only issue that this would solve for you is decreasing political pressure from the party officials, then this discussion is just political posturing. So I, I really encourage you not to be dragged into political culture wars issues here. I think you do a good job of stating clear of that for the most part. And I'd like to ask that you focus on things that truly matter to East Hemphill, like the pork chop intersection, speed bumps, parks, things like that, that do fall within your jurisdiction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mel Luckt. I live at 708 Farmingdale Road. And I feel when you put sanctuary, that gives other people who have attitudes towards immigrants the right to mistreat those people when you use that term. If you want to know facts about immigrants and how they settled, I work with Church World Services who help settle migrants here. And we would have people come out and talk with you to see how well it works and how long it takes for people to get to be citizens here. And the fact about when you use the term that the migrants are the problem, the data doesn't show that at all. They're very, you use some target little incidents in world news, but in general, migrants, immigrants settle and are very peaceful people. And if you, we would have somebody come out and talk to the board if they want to see how wonderfully it works and the success of settling people in this township and in the city. So using as the, using those terms, especially sanctuary stuff is, I think is bad politics for Hemphill. It's almost you should put it on the ballot, see what people think in East Hemphill. Somehow, or have a bigger meeting about it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Leslie Gianopolis. I live at 721 Dorsey Road. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how this works. Will you answer a question if I ask it directly of the board? About this issue? I'll tell you the question and then you can. What, what law would this resolution enforce that is not being enforced now?
You understand that a resolution is not a law. It's not a, all a resolution is, is an expression of our concern. Concern. Concern.
So your concern is that the laws are not being enforced now?
That's correct. In some, in some places.
Here?
No, not here.
Then, then we don't need the resolution. And my, my reason for asking this is one of the things that happened, I too am a volunteer at Church World Services. One of the things that happens when you make these non-sanctuary places is people who are afraid of being targeted for not being citizens will not call for help. If, if they need an ambulance, they won't call because someone's going to call ICE on them. If they see a crime committed by one of us, they will not call the police and help them catch those people because then the police have to turn around and turn them in and send them back to somewhere, some horrible place that they, they will probably be killed in. So we need to be very, very careful when we make a resolution to what that can do to the people in our community.
Just a, a comment. I'd be hard pressed to find, to find a situation where somebody is sent back. Nobody is being sent back in today's.
That's not true. That's not true at all. Look, look at the statistics from, and it was with President Obama, President Trump and President, yeah. Thank you. It, it happens, yes, it does. Or they don't get sent back, but they get sent to an ICE prison. And they sit there for years and years and years.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Bree Hawkins. I'm at 265 Church Street, just over here. So like the first thing that comes to mind, I've lived in East Hemphill my entire life. I grew up here, right across the street from the high school. And I love it here and I have my kids here and my husband. And, you know, one of the things that I like best about it is it is a very safe place to live. You know, I can not lock my car at night and I don't worry about it. Okay? And my opinion about designating it as a non-sanctuary type area is the people that want to move out here and legally are here can't do necessarily that because they don't feel welcome to begin with. But we're very diverse, the community is. My kids go to LPC with a very diverse community of people there. Which I think is a great thing about Lancaster in general. And, you know, to say that safety is a concern, I understand. But ultimately, seeking safety for anybody is a fundamental human right. Right? If you're in a situation where you're in an unsafe situation, your natural reaction is to seek safety. So when people come into the country, whether it's illegal or legally, they're ultimately all doing the same thing. They're looking for a safe place to be because wherever they were, they weren't. I just think it's instilling fear into people if we designate this area. And I don't know what's to be gained by saying, okay, we're not gonna, we're not going to be a, a certain, I'm trying to think of the word. We're not going to be a sanctuary city versus not. I just don't know what the point is of designating it when it's just not something that's needed here in East Hemphill. And I have to agree with saying, you know, illegal people that come here are criminals. That's not the case. The people that I've met in the 15 years I've been working with refugees and immigrants, you know, they have incredible stories of the amount of effort of just getting here on, you know, by just so many tremendous means. And if they're going to be contributing members of the community, whether they got here illegally or they're seeking then proper legal status, they should have the right to be here. But ultimately safely be here and not be in fear that they're going to get detained and sent to a prison where they're going to sit and rot for years.
Thank you.
My name is Amar Haile. I live 5947 One Road, Spilysburg. I'm a clear immigrant here in the US, to tell you the fact. So there is no need for us in order to pass a resolution while we can really shelter people like me. Now, I've been here 33 years. I have three kids. Yeah, I enjoyed the opportunity. You know, without the US, you know, people fellow like me hasn't been survived and lived good life. I work a county job. I'm a senior social worker. So you shutting down, they're passing a resolution against those people who really need the shelter from you guys. I guess we need to focus on something else instead of putting a resolution to tell you the fact. Of course, the federal government, the state would need to do their job, definitely. Because we don't need, of course, criminals here. But however, there are thousands really needing the Americans' good heart. So I'm one of the people in who got the opportunity to receive it here in Lancaster. Don't you think Lancaster is just for Caucasian? No. There are so many ethnic groups in this area, including myself. So I'm totally against the resolution you guys would think to write about in the state of focusing on real job and to support the community. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hi, my name's Carly Abbott and I live at 1400 Banner Drive. This one's working.
I come with no experience of working with refugees or immigrants and I am not one myself. But I'm a mother who lives here in Hemphill. And I had written a whole bunch of things, but a lot of people have covered what I wanted to say. So I just wanted to say that I teach my kids to do unto others as they would have done to them. A good chunk of our lineage arrived here escaping the potato famine. I'm sure they were met by some ethnic prejudices and fear. But they received opportunities and they created a thriving plumbing business that's still large and active today. I really don't feel that a municipal building is the place to debate national immigration policies. I feel it's a place we can discuss how we as a community do treat our neighbors. So please, while considering this measure, think about what it's actually going to accomplish for our community and weigh that against the harm it could cause our neighbors. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
Not.
All right. At this point, anything more from the board?
Not for me at this point.
A question about next steps then, or you know, will there, will there be a draft of a resolution? Is that, or?
My intention is that there will be a draft. Okay. The draft will not deal with sanctuary or non-sanctuary status or anything involved with Lancaster City. It will be a resolution that supports, plan to, plan to support aspects of the discussion that I think we all can support. If we all can't support them, there's a likelihood that, that, that we won't have a resolution. But it would be my thought that I would draft something, get it out to all of you over the next two weeks. And if you get back to me with any comments or changes that you want to make, give me an idea of how you feel about the situation. Continue to feel about it and then we'll go from there. All right. Next up on the agenda is our park and recreation plan. An introduction and discussion. Mrs. Switzer, why don't you?
So the township does not have its own recreation plan. It was a subset of our comprehensive plan a few years ago and didn't really take front and center stage in any of our documents moving into the future. So what we did was we created a plan, recreation plan, which addresses how we handle recreation, what facilities we have. It provides you with an inventory. It's really just for discussion purposes at this point in time. The Park and Rec Group has looked at it. There's been amendments made. It's in the review process and we wanted to get it before the board to possibly consider adoption in one of the August meetings.
Just thoughts as I was involved with the development of the original comprehensive plan. Something I kind of take personally. Since this is a planning document and as our overarching planning document, that maybe we would actually roll this in as an appendix and incorporate the whole plan in, but make it part of the comprehensive plan. We still leave everything the same, but just roll it in there as part of the overall comprehensive plan like we did with our official maps too. That's, it's a one-stop shop for our planning documents. I overall support the idea of us having a good recreation plan.
Any additional comment? I do think that sounds like a sound idea. And we'll certainly take a look at that over the next couple of weeks and hopefully incorporate it into the comprehensive, total comprehensive plan for the township.
I also like the pictures and the way we did the maps in this too. It's actually pretty helpful. Most residents don't even realize where most of our parks are. This is a really good document for people to kind of see what our recreation facilities are.
Agreed.
If there's no objection, I'll post this on the website as a draft. Just so it's out there to the public.
Please do. Anything for the audience on the park plan?
Just so they all know what we're talking about because I'm not sure they do. You know, it, how many pages, Mr. Russell, is that document?
The compliance in the 60-page range, this is 44 documents.
Okay, so it's 44 pages and it lists all the parks in East Hemphill? And you'd be perhaps impressed with how many parks there are in East Hemphill. And so it has photos of them and descriptions of them and their size and that kind of thing. So it's an interesting document.
And one that probably will be revised as, as we move along the process. Okay. Anything from the audience? Anything from Zoom? All right. So sure, Mr. Johnson, I'll be available to any, my board member that might have any questions about what's going on with the park and recreation plan. Next up is public comment. We have any public comment this evening on, on non-agenda items? Okay.
Sean Burke, 487 Jasmine. I run Hemphill Beverage, the beer distributor here in Landisville. I'd like to speak about the recent roadwork project that took place on Church Street and the burden that it placed on our business and the neighboring businesses in our area. I've been employed at Hemphill Beverage for over 10 years now. I've seen numerous roadwork projects. I've never seen any planned and executed quite as poorly as this most, most recent one. On a busy throughway that serves as one of the main roads through Landisville, I expected that East Hemphill Township would be much more proactive in limiting traffic congestion, especially during peak hours. We have five schools right down the street. On an average day between buses, parents picking up kids, sporting events, faculty departing, combined with normal rush hour traffic, Church Street, as anyone that lives around here knows, can be pretty difficult to traverse, pardon me, to traverse. The unprofessional nature of the flagging operation by JVI, the company that was subcontracted by PennDOT, caused massive delays far beyond anything reasonable, any reasonable expectation, even for a major roadwork project. My colleagues and I occasionally endured wait times of up to 25 minutes to get from Stony Battery to Main Street. We are aware the township received a bevy of complaints, but rather than act as an intermediary who could advocate for businesses and residents, the township appeared to refer those complaints to PennDOT. PennDOT in turn made us aware of several restrictions imposed by the township, which added to the frustration of motorists and businesses alike. And the quality of the work done has also left a lot to be desired. The plans provided by the township were not always adhered to by the work crew. And we would have preferred the township serve as a liaison in presenting our concerns to PennDOT. We are very unhappy with the end result, given that we just, our business spent $7,000 a few years ago having our parking lot resurfaced only to have the crew cut six feet back from the sidewalk into our parking lot. We are not thrilled with how it looks. We also wanted to speak on behalf of our neighbors at RH Cooper and Sons. None of them could make it here. We, we are very concerned for the condition of the sidewalk in their parking lot right by the intersection. At this time, I'd like to give my assistant manager, Mr. Richards, a chance to elaborate on that.
My name is Chase Richards, 122 Treetops Drive. Good evening. I would like to expound on the specifics of the concerns Sean has expressed. Our business incurred substantial hardship over the past two months. We, we understand by necessity parking lot access during periods of construction will be limited. However, our issues were exacerbated by the uncouth behavior of the flagging staff. Customers entering our lot were often accosted and had to contend with vulgar language from the flaggers. Even on one instance, we had a flagger trespassing and rummaging through our private property in our garage, which is not open to the general public. In addition to the general unprofessionalism exhibited, their conduct also created public safety hazards on several occasions with traffic being set in opposing directions in the same lane. On the point of the quality of workmanship was also poor. I do have images here if anyone would like to care to examine them. The portion of the sidewalk adjacent to the RH Cooper's used auto lot has sections of exposed foundation which may freeze if water gets underneath during the winter months. The JVI workers said they would come back to rectify that issue. They ended up sealing that the next day. So it's left looking exposed and uneven. That's in contrast to the schematics provided by the township. It wasn't quite followed to form by the company. As far as Hemphill Beverage's parking lot is concerned, there still features a small lip in the middle of it, which is traversable by sedan traffic now, but it's also not quite what was specified in the original plans. As Sean mentioned earlier, during 2020, we paid out our parking lot resurface. Now with the six-foot cut in the middle, it's fresh black top and just looks uneven and aesthetically unpleasing to our customers. I mean, we're not here to just offer basic criticism, but to offer some constructive feedback as far as future state projects coordinated with the township. I mean, our preference going forward would be for as much work as feasible to be conducted during evening hours to mitigate the harm to both businesses and motorists alike, in addition to the local residents. We would simply like greater coordination moving forward to help alleviate potential future hardship imposed on the businesses and residents in the area. Thank you. I do have images if anyone would like to look at what Cooper's lot looks like.
Thank you. Can you leave these, just leave these with us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'll just address, I understand your concerns. But also I just want to push back on one item about the township not acting as an intermediary. We fought with PennDOT for two years on this project about not touring them when school is in session and to do evening work. And both those were shot down by the department. And both those will made a huge difference with the traffic control. And I drove through that traffic control every day. So I know how bad the flagging was. It was terrible.
Just to clarify something that you just mentioned, the township was in favor of evening work. See, when we reached out to PennDOT, we were actually told the opposite, that they requested evening work and were told no by the township. So.
I'll, I will, I will look at that one, but I could tell you, we would love to have evening work and not have all the disruptions we had during the school day.
That seemed to have made the most sense to everyone and that was not the answer I got from the PennDOT supervisor that I spoke with.
I just wanted to understand, we, we reckoned, one, we were not happy with the flagging and that, that concern has been, was raised about the poor job with the flagging operations. We were not happy with it being done during school. We got political representatives involved. We had, we made a, did a best faith effort that you can to a state agency that doesn't listen. Well, I appreciate the clarification on that then. So I mean, we, we, we did try. We did have some issues with the design which were resolved. And certainly what I'm looking at there are issues with what you call a punch list item of things that should be corrected, which we will pass on to staff.
Thank you.
So.
Well, we'll take a look. I think from here, we'll, we'll take a look at what you're saying and your comments. If you could leave any notes that you might have, we'll discuss it with staff, possibly even, even have a meeting with you here at the township building. I guess the, the question in my mind, where do we go from here? What would you like to see?
I'd like to see at this point, the issues that can be rectified with the way that the work was left, especially at the RH Cooper property. It's pretty clear from those pictures where water is going to get under the foundation, freeze and crack the sidewalk that was just put in. I think that is, you know, of immediate concern. We aren't thrilled with the lip that is in front of our business. That was not part of the design. The design that the township provided was an 80-foot depression that went across our entire parking lot. You now have a part of it that goes up. It's not easy to see from those pictures, but if you're at the property, it is very noticeable. We already have a limited parking lot there. It's an old building. We're in a 102-year-old building. It's not the greatest parking lot in the world. Anything that makes it harder for people to pull in impacts our business.
We'll, we'll do what we can.
We appreciate it.
Get your to that.
And we are sorry about what you went through, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, public comment?
My name is Demeka Gethahun. I'm the pastor of the Ethiopian Evangelical Church. I'm an immigrant. I came to the US 35 years ago. And I thank the Lord for this country because he gave us a lot of opportunity. And this time we face a little bit strange thing because of the, the road work. You know, our church has to exit one from the church, on the church street, and one is from the other side. And they, they closed, when they do that, they closed our, our exit. And they will put a sign, if you see it, maybe if you drive, that we, we try to, you know, to stop them because every entrance, the other entrance is open, but only ours are closed. We felt that, have never felt discriminated before. But now we, we, we came here to the township. We talked to Ms. Sidney. We talked to Mr. Perry. We, I came with elders and we didn't get the proper answer and respect really. We, the elders came here. We want that open because we have never had an accident there. You know, we need two exits. So when we, when we, we talked to the township, the township is blaming to the PennDOT. When we talked to the PennDOT, the PennDOT blaming to the township. And we're confused in between and we really sometimes harassed, you know, when, when we tell them, please don't do this because this is a church. We are serving the community. We are a good people here. So really, nobody cares. And I said, why? Because this is, the township stand, should stand for us. But we didn't get that. So we're really disappointed. But now it is, they're opening it. But the other problem, what they're doing is they drive with their heavy bulldozers or all kinds of vehicle and came through the other side without our knowledge. When we are not there, they drove and damaged our new asphalt, you know? And when, when I talked to them, they don't care. They said, no, we cannot, we cannot fix. It is just broken here and there. And I, I really said, where do we go for this? You know, we, it is not, I'm not, I'm not fighting for my house. I'm fighting for the community's house. So we don't get. So we don't get a really a good answer. And all the grass after they finished, the grass area is damaged and they don't put uh the soil and they they put the soil, but there is no grass on it and they don't cover, you know, to to grow the grass and the weeds are popping up. So uh, we really felt that I didn't know that there is hearing here. And I'm a a a thank God that I know in the future I'll 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 show up. Because you know, uh, really, so uh, I I thank you, uh, everyone to listen to me. That's what my complaints.
I want to express uh an apology if you feel that you've been discriminated against. We don't discriminate against anyone. Uh, and we recognize that that uh you know, we have to do better. And and we we will do better. Uh, we don't, the fact that you say you you didn't get the hearing uh with your elders and the respect that you should get, uh, we're sorry for that. We apologize. That said, um, again, this is another situation where uh, we'll do our best to try to resolve the situation uh as best we can within the limits of what we're allowed to do. Because as you know, the road is a state road and it's and and PennDOT was responsible for the the design and the uh construction on that road. Uh, it's also my understanding that uh going back to perhaps I could be wrong about this, before you got here, um, we had communicated to uh the el- the elders or the pastor at that time that uh this was going to happen, that the that the uh driveway was going to be closed. So, you know, and why you didn't know about that, again, perhaps we could have done a better, we could have done a better job. But but um, we will get back to you. Uh, we'll take a look at uh anything that you feel needs to be done uh in a in a manner to accommodate, uh, you know, what you need there. Okay?
So I know we don't normally address staff during public comment, but it would probably be good to have a discussion with PennDOT about having a township representative at the punchless inspection and making sure that we're
I was not aware of any of these.
Making sure we're addressing these, all these concerns that have been raised in the photos that we were just uh presented with some of the work that had occurred that we need to have a township representative just to advocate. Now, I I just warn you that we're advocating. We we don't have, the we're, the contractor is not contracted with the township. We don't have authority to withhold funding on the contractor's side until they address issues. All we can do is advocate. And it's still going to be up to PennDOT, PennDOT's inspector and the contractor, all of which we have no control over to actually affect the changes. Uh, but we can see if we can do our best to advocate. I I agree with you. I was not happy just in general with the way this project was run.
Okay.
There must be, I don't need to pronounce my name again, Amara Hiley. There is a misunderstanding. Of course, our pastor had been following up with this issue and he had made numerous phone calls to PennDOT as well. So they finally got, you know, to tell you the fact is, as pastor said, you know, we felt really bad. They're thinking that, you know, my past, here, you know, you know, everything what's gonna happen. You can debate, is argue about it for not doing the right thing. But all of a sudden, when our driveway was closed, everybody was upset because we didn't have nobody to listen to us. Anyway, we called and called finally the PennDOT guy, called pastor. Because earlier, we found a lawyer who wanted to see the original map, the roadmap. You know, to dispute, you know, with the PennDOT because that was the original plan. Why you close off this driveway? And then in the meantime, we got a call from PennDOT. They said, we're sorry, we're gonna come and open the driveway again. They sealed it already. What a waste of taxpayers' money. And then they are working on now to reopen the driveway. So if you haven't heard anything about this, this is what's going on now. They dug and took the sealed concrete out and then they they're working on it. So at least the only thing that we can grieve is our new asphalt was damaged. Who's gonna be responsible for it? It's not, they drove their bulldozer on it and they're making a crack all over. So that upsets us. We put eighty thousand dollars to repave that asphalt. So we don't know where to go. If you guys look at into this, we really, the church, I appreciate this so much.
That's that's what we were, we were asking our staff to do is advocate.
Thank you.
I think we had one more public comment?
I just wondered um if you guys could give a quick public update on where the funding for the Mountville Public Library stands? And if there's any developments in that area.
We continue to have discussions with the library staff. We've asked them for some information. Uh, and we're waiting to hear from them. Ball's in their court. Okay? All right, anything else? Public comment? Okay, with that, let's move on to the manager's report.
Lost track of it, sorry. The Centerville Road Project is moving along as anticipated. They're currently curing the one, the last side of the bridge that they just constructed. Uh, so that should be probably open in the next month or two to to a traffic in that area.
And that is an example about how a PennDOT project should run from a traffic controls perspective.
We talked about the Church Street project. I don't know that I have anything else to add to that. The Old Orange Town Road Project is on hold until July per the contractor. The Farmingdale Road uh long-term project, that's also a JVI project. Uh, we're working through their punch list. And um Bowman Company has met with some property owners to review their concerns after the work has been completed. And we're also working on closing out that contract and grant. The Stony Battery Trail, we're awaiting the paving contractor. We had one contractor lined up and uh the wait was too long, so we moved to another contractor. So as soon as he's available, that'll be done. The truck study signage, uh, we found a a difficult issue with the law. And regarding the axle count, so we had to uh do some shifting around and instead of going by uh axles, we are now going by weight class. And new signage has been ordered and should be in place shortly. The zoning hearing board's second meeting for the Colebrook validity challenge has been scheduled for Thursday, June twentieth at seven PM. We continue to wait for the HOP, the Highway Occupancy Permit for Route seventy two and Lititz Road. I reached out to Bowman to see where we stand with that. He's reached out to PennDOT. There, we're all kind of waiting for them to to get their act together, to get that issued to us so that we can move forward with that project. The Amos Hur Phase Two, uh, which is the Bachi Courts, the second pavilion, the parking lot expansion is to commence on July first and complete by November of this year. Uh, Stormwater Projects, the Nissley and Gloucester Basins, we're still working for, waiting for the MPDS permits. That's a waiting game. Uh, we've submitted a grant for the Indian Springs Project. Uh, nothing else. The Harrisburg Pike Drainage, we did submit another grant for that and waiting to hear from the Growing Greener Grant Initiative. And pretty much that's it. I have no meeting or group report out. But we do have several group meetings scheduled for the coming weeks.
Any question for the manager this evening? Anything from the audience? All right. Anything more for the good of the cause here this evening? Hearing none. I'll adjourn the meeting at eight nineteen.